Calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Here.
Tenya? Rosiano?
Here.
Notary?
Here.
Rovell?
Here.
Sergeant LeBert?
Here.
And Mayor Melham?
Here.
Ledgerlegends?
Ledgerlegends is the reply of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lunchtime?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22nd, 2022 edition of the Bellevue Times and the Star Tribune. The Sunshine was compiled by adoptive reporting to the press, posting a file with the municipal clerk, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each regular meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the township website and also on the bulletin board.
Thank you. So I'd like to welcome you to our one and only meeting for the month of July, just to remind everybody, we traditionally have two meetings a month, the first one being the council caucus meeting, and the second one being a regular meeting in the months of July and August, we only have one meeting per month, therefore it's always going to be a council caucus discussion. So what happens is that any member of the governing body or a member of our administration can put a topic on for discussion, and you'll hear us discuss it in and among ourselves, you, the guests, the audience, those that are here or watching online can certainly listen. If you have a question or want to make a comment about this particular portion of the meeting, you can certainly do so during the public commenting portion of the meeting coming later. So without further ado, there's only one item on the agenda today, it was put on by our township attorney, and it is the short-term rental ordinance. And basically, for those listening, it's basically going to govern Airbnb-type individual rentals.
Yeah, basically, that's correct, Mayor. This is actually a topic that brought up by a number of individuals up here in the past, and I've been enlisted to write the ordinance. Brian Bennett and I pulled some together and did some research in what other towns do, bigger cities, smaller towns, and I really just need some direction in terms of what, how you would like to regulate it. And I'll just give you some examples. Some towns don't let, you know, one-family homes be on a short-term rental. I find that more residential suburban types, where you have a lot of one-family neighborhoods, and people don't want their neighbors renting their house for two days or one day. And we start out at two families. Some of them have where if you're going to do it, it has to be owner-occupied. So you have a two-to-five family where there's a, so that somebody is there all the time to, you know, oversee it and control it. Some towns do it, they won't let it be one day, it's got to be two or more. And less than, you know, limit it to a number of days within a year. One ordinance said nine, they can only do it for a total of 90 days in an entire year. So these are, I don't want to, it's not my decision to make, so I don't just want to throw anything in there. I want to get some direction from all of you as to what you're thinking, and then I'll put it together and send it all to you like I do with all the other ordinances that I'm asked to draft, and have you review it, make some changes, rather than just do it completely from scratch, based on what I think, not what I think, but you will. So if anybody has any input, so, or have any questions about it.
As, as you initially said, we, we've discussed this at least once or twice already at a work session, so a lot of our comments are already out there in the public domain. I, I'm not crazy about it. I certainly would be inclined, if we do it, to do owner-occupied for sure. And absolutely not one day.
Yeah, they do five days.
You do it one day, you're prone to being cheaper than a motel, and you're prone to unfortunately prostitution.
Parties.
Parties. Even though your ordinance will, will preclude that, but, like, once it's done, you can't control it.
Exactly.
Then the biggest, the biggest thing I have is, I ask this question all the time, unfortunately. Who are the Airbnb police inside this building? We have a ton of illegal apartments that people know about that we can't get to. Every time the police department goes on a domestic or goes on a call in a basement apartment, they have a specific form that they fill out, and if it goes to the jurisdiction for department, I don't know where it goes after that. So who's going to enforce it? Who's going to look up, who's going to look up these listings? Who's going to go after them? Who's going to do all that? We can create all the great legislation we want, it's, there's no effect at the end of the day because we're not enforcing it.
There is some licensing involved, so at least you should know.
There is a licensing involved, so you do, do know who's doing it.
Okay.
Just because there's a licensing involved doesn't mean you know who's doing it.
Well, people, well, people could be doing it right now, we don't know about it. But a lot more, at least, yeah.
I do like the yearly license, kind of like what the fire department does with the commercial businesses, where they go in once a year for their.
You know, all that.
Inspection.
Yeah, not every, not every turnover, because that would be impossible, but a yearly registration and yearly inspection.
That stuff is all, you know, all being there, but it's, you know, again, it's, it could be about enforcement and, you know, neighbors complaining and things like that. But other than that, not much you can do. You could put it in place and at least try to get some, something, some control, so to speak.
Right, well, it almost becomes preventative at that point, too, where someone sees our, that we do have regulations, they may not be inclined to even make it an Airbnb. You know, they may say, ah, no, I got to register with the town, I'm not even going to try that.
Yeah, I, I also think it should be owner, owner occupied yearly license. What did you say before, Steve, there were some towns that had nine, 90 days, did you say?
90 days in a year that you can do.
Maps, maps.
Throughout the year, not, not like, not 90 days a block.
Again, being able to control that and monitor that is, frankly, impossible.
Like, you'd have to prove you lived there 90, the rest of the year and only rented.
Yeah.
It's like five days.
So I, I didn't particularly like that provision because it's impossible to mon, that's impossible to enforce.
That's more like a condo, it's like a condo building, where you could see.
Yeah, that would be tough to monitor, but I'm just throwing things out, things I saw that I wouldn't, I wouldn't put in.
Two, two days is not good, it's, it's a lot of riffraff. Five days, too, in my opinion, is a lot of riffraff. I mean, this is not cake made.
Again, two, two, you know, two, two days, two days. You know, two days would be a weekend, obviously.
Two days is a weekend, a weekend party, though.
Yeah, that's all it is.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, today, I am the chief complaint officer of this township, and today I'm looking at an email that came in at 2:39. I was a resident of Bellevue, my landlord illegally evicted me due to a white-purging. Went to the town to see what they can do. My apartment was illegal, town said my apartment was illegal, they refused to do anything about that. Why would they even take my complaints? Wouldn't even take my complaints. Just a little bit of what's going on here, too. Why do you have a town that orders 23-12-1 if they're not going to enforce it? They're not enforcing the stuff that we, we know of potentially with regard to illegal apartments. I mean, listen, I mean, create a nice law.
Well, she had her illegal apartments, the town, obviously.
Can do something.
The landlord, the landlord has an obligation to do something if, if that tenant, he rents an illegal apartment, he has an obligation, can't just.
Or the town can find them, the town can inspect, and the town can do everything that we're supposed to be doing. But, I mean, I, I've talked to the chief many times about paperwork that goes in the police department to the jurisdiction for department, and I don't see an onslaught of illegal apartments being found all the time. Again, we could pass this and tighten it up, who's going to enforce it and where are we going to be a year from now? Besides just creating some good legislation.
Well, at least I have some, some direction. I'll send, I'll do it, I'll send it to you before, you know, in the next week or so, so you can all look at it, and any input would be greatly appreciated, so that in the obvious meeting, we, in the obvious meeting, we can have our conference meeting.
Okay, next on the agenda is report of the manager.
Any members of the council, I'll just give you a couple of quick updates, our lead line replacement program, we're completing phase one. Phase one is the identification of the homes that either have copper or lead. This is done by what they call is a test box. It is a lot of work, it's time-consuming, but we should be done next week, and then the following week we'll actually start replacing those identified that have the lead lines versus the copper. We've fulfilled our 60 water mandate, we have to sample 60 homes every six months, and the results came back, and we are within all levels that we need to be, so that's good news on water testing. And we continue to exercise the water valves and hydrants, this is the height of 320. How confident are you to do this? This has been creating some, some low water pressures around town from discoloration, but in the long run, this, this testing that we do with the water valves and hydrants will reduce, hopefully will reduce some water breaks. And that's basically brings us up, very, very busy summer, of works, has an abundance of projects that we're working on, we've got camp, so it's, it's been a good summer so far, a lot of activity. You have no continued questions or concerns?
Questions to the manager? So Anthony, I know we've been emailing for the last couple of days or so, I've gotten a lot of complaints about the fields being locked up. Over the Fourth of July weekend, a lady reached out to me just to ask me, hey, Mayor, when is the pickleball courts open? I said, the courts are open dawn to dusk. Later on, a couple hours later, she emailed me a nasty email saying she just went to the pickleball courts at 5:00 o'clock, they were locked. I've learned in this business to often trust but verify, so I got in my car and drove there at about 5:30, quarter to 6:00, locked up. Still two and a half, three hours of daylight left at that time. Over the course of this past weekend, an image was circulating on social media about parks being locked again. So I know that we tried to do something with park rangers or park, I know it's a work in progress, but can you give us an update on where we started?
Yeah, so the, we're fine, the first one, you're correct, that was a mistake that was made by one of our part-time employees. So we did lock up the pickleball courts by mistake, we've corrected that. The second posting that was sent down.
How does one lock up courts by mistake, Devine?
So he was under the impression that, that there was a school activ, a school event going on, and because there was a lot of activity going on, there was no parking spots left, and he wanted to concentrate on another area, he made a decision. Again, he was a part-time employee that thought he was making the right decision, and that's how it happened. We've corrected it, we explained to him that that wasn't the right decision to make, and he should check with a supervisor before making that decision. But that was the only time that the court was locked. There was a picture that was floating around on Sunday, and I got in my car and drove over after having a screaming match with one of our employees saying, how could you lock it when I told you not to lock it? He goes, I swear it's not locked. And we went over it, and it wasn't locked, so there was a post, a picture posted of a locked fence, but that was from a previous day.
So how about at 11:45 on Saturday, when I sent you two pictures of two lock gates?
That was not the pickleball court.
No, it's not, I was, I'm saying that's a whole nugget, you're right.
And then I believe, I believe that that has been addressed. So the Sunday picture was from Saturday, that was corrected, the pickleball courts are open, so that's corrected. So, you know, my report to the American Council is that we don't have an issue with the lock fence, that we are open from dawn to dusk, and we should be fine. If there's any issue at all, please reach out directly to me, because I have the cell numbers of all of the part-time and full-time employees working here.
All right, feel free to contact. All right, we're good with that. Next on the agenda is the report of the mayor. So some past events, this past Friday, the Peruvian flag raising was very well attended. We had a fantastic July 3rd, Bellevue seemed to dodge rain for two straight days. On the 3rd, we had our fireworks, where everybody else was canceling yet, I think manager made the right call on that one, I want to thank police, fire, DQW, all the hard work. We probably had definitely record-setting attendance that was on hand. It was, it was, I mean, there wasn't a seat in the concrete bleachers, there wasn't a seat on the grass across the street from the pool in the parking lot, and the show, the show was excellent as well. So that was July 3rd. Next day, July 4th, was our traditional July 4th activities, we had yoga in the park, very well attended, we had close to 50 people attend that, the most we ever had. And then we had a very nice ceremony to honor our Peruvian reward vets that are buried down in District 4 Church at 11:00. And to wrap up some past events, I had the opportunity to attend a very touching and moving junior police academy graduation. That was actually a very good event there. Upcoming events, July 13th, which is going to be this coming Thursday, the Essex County Clerk's Office is doing the Passport in Noda Republic, that is currently sold out. We're trying to get some more slots, be able to check the website for more information. Also, July 13th begins our summer entertainment series. We start off summer entertainment with the Infernos this coming Thursday. Going to be a great show, so far the weather looks great. Tuesday, July 18th, and Saturday, the 22nd, Essex County Home Improvement Workshop, check out the website. July 19th, Wednesday, very successful last time I did Pizza with a Cop at Algeria's Pizzeria, from 6:00 to 8:00. Next Thursday, summer concert continues with Dr. K's Motown Review. July 22nd, a lot happening in Bellevue Fairway Park, 12:00 from 2:00 to 12:00, Compostin Workshop, pre-registration is required. On July 27th, summer concert, Swing Combo Salso Band. Few more events I'm going over because we don't have two meetings this month. So on August 1st, National Night Out Against Crime, a little change this year, we are still going to encourage local barbecues and local block parties. However, because we have so few townwide, the police department is organizing one big fun event up at the high school for Tuesday, July 1st, thank you police department for that. August 3rd, the mobile motor vehicle station is coming to Bellevue. Again, you must register on the township website, and I believe you can get the real ID, you have to register for the real ID for that. August 3rd is going to be summer entertainment again with freestyle music. August 10th is the caveos, and August 15th is our next council meeting. Just some quick news, tomorrow, Wednesday, and Thursday begin the wakes and funerals for the two Newark firemen, it's going to be this coming Wednesday and Thursday, we've been in contact with our counterparts in the city of Newark, obviously Bellevue Fire stands ready for mutual aid at all times, a bunch of us from Bellevue will be going over there, and that leads me to something, Ms. Fleishman, that I forgot to do. So at this moment, I'm going to ask everybody just to pause for a split second, so we can honor the two firemen that just tragically lost their lives at a moment of silence. Thank you. Today, I also noticed that our police department bike patrols were out, thank you Deputy Chief for that, that always looks great. Sunday, I received an award from the Dominican Republic group, and we attended their, their festival, again, they're a big part of this community. Speaking of awards, Ms. Gabby Venemini received a Sustainability Hero Award, congratulations to Gabby. Speaking of Gabby, I hear that her, her garden was poached, I want to thank Rita, who's one of our, actually, I shouldn't say one of our only volunteers, she is our only volunteer at the community garden, made me some really great zucchini flowers that I recently learned were out of your garden, Gabby, so they were excellent, at least I got to them before the groundhog bit.
Thanks for sharing.
Pickleball remains a huge hit, the manager's going to work on next round of classes from Coach Andy, summer camp, as the manager reported, is going very well, fall sports registration is now available, football cheerleading and soccer, and as always, check out our library for great programs, including ESL. That really wraps up my mayor's report, again, a little longer because there's only one meeting this month and one meeting next month. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, we have none to report, says the clerk. Next item, communications, a march frank over residing at 15 Vicker Place is requesting a block party on September 9th from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m., assuming that goes to the police department. Next item on our agenda is ordinances, first, we have ordinances for possible adoption. An ordinance authorizing the township of Bellevue to accept an easement for the location of and access to a gateway sign concerning the real property located at 81 Steeman Street, a portion of the former block 9403, Lot 1, to be known as 9403, Lot 1.01. I need a motion to introduce. We have a motion made.
Adoption, you mean, public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. I'm still not used to, yeah, new to agenda, need a motion to open.
Motion for public hearing.
Public hearing.
So moved, second.
We have a motion made and second to open public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have a question about this ordinance, I'm going to ask you to please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Roll call.
Roll call, to open up, let's roll call to open up public hearing.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Sergeant LeBert?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes, but as I said, just going to call upon you, just come forwards, state your name and address for the record. Just someone, make sure that microphone is off, please.
Someone from the town.
Thank you, she hired for August 15th.
Good job, good job.
Thank you, thank you. That's good, thank you. Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47th Point Street, I'm going to keep this very quick, just for the verification of every one of the audience and those who are watching online, this particular property is the former school number one block, which is now finally undergoing construction, there's going to be a new quick check on the two-thirds of the block facing Rutgers Street. I just would like to confirm that this easement is for the Welcome to Bellevue sign, the one that had been there for many years, is that sign going to be just repositioned once the principal work for the quick check is completed?
I think it's already, I honestly don't know why, so much for instance, it is, well, but it's two blocks into Bellevue, first of all, but yes, it's, it's exactly, I think it's exactly where it currently is, it's just that.
We just want an easement.
Yeah.
You're going to preserve, you're going to preserve that previous Welcome to Bellevue sign?
Yes.
There's not going to be a new sign, any, any?
That I don't know, don't hold me to that, maybe it'll be a better sign, I'm not sure.
All right, well, I just, I would hope that the existing sign, because we have the same type of sign all over the township reform.
We do, and most of them, cherry blossom is spelled incorrectly, I believe.
Is it, I didn't, no, it's capital, I think it's capital, capital.
Capital, yeah.
Just, as you probably know, a few years ago, one of our most active Bellevue citizens, John Tonneri, and his daughter, took the time to repaint all these signs, they did a magnificent job colorizing them, and I would hate to see, unless the signs are victim to termites, I hope these, these signs can be preserved and that particular sign can be revitalized at that site, thank you.
Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only? Nope? I want a motion to close and move for final adoption.
So moved, second.
Motion made and second to close and move for final adoption, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Sergeant LeBert?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ah, let's see, ordinance 20-23, ordinance for possible adoption, and ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Bellevue in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, amending the revised general ordinance code of the township of Bellevue, check of 23, section 18, to include a new section, 18 dot 30, entitled Satellite Dish. Need a motion to open public commenting?
So moved, second.
We have a motion made and second to open public comment, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Sergeant Notary?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Sergeant LeBert?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes, we are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. You have a question, I'm going to call upon you, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47th Point Street, could you just elaborate on exactly what is entailed in this ordinance? It doesn't really say much other than it has to do with satellite dishes, are you even limiting the positions, the sizes, are there fees involved now to have a satellite dish?
There are, yes, yes. These is the one question I want to know.
Albert, this was published, was it not?
The, yes.
It was published.
So it was available to be ran?
Right, but I didn't break it along, but just for the record, just so that we all can see it, to know exactly what's happening.
Off the top of my head, it's limiting location, you cannot have them on the side of the building, you can't have them in the front of the building, they have to be on a, on a roof, they aren't on the floor, they have to be enclosed, you can only have one per unit.
Heights.
Heights and all that great stuff.
All regulations.
Can't be seen in the street.
When they're longer use, they have to be rebuilt.
Right, and again, I'm going to ask who the satellite police are going to be, but when the manager figures that out, we'll, we'll actually be able to make some, make some of these changes actually for the better, I think. I'm not sure who's going to, who's going to, who's going to regulate it.
That was my next question, is this going to be a code enforcement issue or residents expected to?
It is certainly a code enforcement issue.
It's, it's part of the zoning code as well, so it is a code enforcement issue, and there are penalties and.
But the Bellevue police aren't going to be expected to?
Police, absolutely not.
All right, so it's going to be up to residents to notify.
Well, you would think it would be construction code, maybe on a CO inspection, they could add it to the checklist or.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only? There are none, say none, does he have a motion to close and move for final adoption?
Thank you, sir.
A motion made and second to close and move for final adoption, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Sergeant LeBert?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, next we have an ordinance for introduction, ordinance 31-23, ordinance for introduction, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Bellevue in the county of Essex and the state of New Jersey establishing a new chapter, 38 of the code, the township of Bellevue entitled nuisance properties by regulating and establishing penalties the excessive utilization of such services. Need a motion to introduce?
So moved, second.
We have a motion made and second to introduce, before I do that, council, I should have answered this question earlier, didn't spot something in here, so it talks about qualifying calls.
Well, if, before you introduce it, if you want to change.
So it, it talks about qualifying calls, and of that, the part where it talks about parking improperly parked vehicles or any other motor vehicle violation on private property. So I know I discussed this a few months ago in a work session, so for excessively double-parked cars in front of certain businesses, you can't allow that to nuisance.
No.
Cars parked on the sidewalk in front of a business?
This is if, if a particular property, people are parking illegally, leaving, and the police have to go to a private property because the owner or.
But what about when the police have to go to a street, like, do a park cars?
This has, no, this has, no, you can't do that, it's, it's a public road, so the, the property owner can't control that. This, the idea of this is try to get property owners to.
And then they park on the sidewalk, is that considered private property, sidewalk?
No, that's, that's right away, that's township right away.
So you can park on the sidewalk, go into a business, and there's nothing that we can call the police?
No, you call the police.
No, I know, there's nothing we can do with that.
It has nothing to do with that.
Okay, we have a motion made and second to introduce, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Sergeant LeBert?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Need a motion to open public comment?
So moved, second.
A motion made and second to open public comment, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Sergeant LeBert?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes, so we are now open for public commenting at this portion of the meeting, just going to ask you to raise your hand, once you're called upon, just please come forward, like Just please come forward, like you heard before, just state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to hopefully speed through this township business. Sure, man.
Hello, I'm Jessica Herrera, I reside at three oh nine Main Street. I find this to be a bit of a problem. I live in a condo association area where it's kind of blocked off, but we have vehicles always parking like on the fire lane. Is this gonna help out, like there are someone that coming?
When you say this, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Like this ordinance that we're talking about right now.
Oh, oh, that one. I was trying to get to that, because I'm a big fan of calling the police for double parked cars.
Like I don't wanna be constantly calling the police, but if they pass by, you're gonna see them. They're all over the fire lanes, God forbid, we have a fire.
You have to call the police.
And they park overnight.
You have to call the police unfortunately, you say it. Yeah, so this ordinance is not gonna, that's what I was trying to get at when we were having that conversation.
So the neighbors have to call each other out on, the police on each other.
I, I, in a perfect world, would love the police to self-see it and to see it themselves and be proactive in it. Unfortunately, a lot of times, we're going call to call and they're not necessarily looking for those type of infractions. I know a lot of people that do call the police, unfortunately, haven't called the police. After one or two tickets. They do not mind after a few tickets, the person will get the hit.
So this particular ordinance affected me before, because I have called. We have, like I said, I live in a condo and they park inside my spot, my sign spot, and the police say we can't do anything about it.
That's private property, that's different.
That's different, so if, if, yeah.
The idea is that the police will get called, they have the call now, and meaning they got called to the property, even though they can't do anything about it. Because when they get the call, they don't know what it is until they get there. When they get there, now they have that call. Under this ordinance, that call gets registered. And if there are multiple calls over a period of time, then it could be considered a nuisance and this ordinance goes into play.
May you please describe what a period of time would be?
Well, it's in the ordinance, and this, this ordinance is on for, for public hearing, probably the next meeting. In August. In August.
Depending on that type of property is...
It depends on how big the property is, how many units there are.
We have thirty-two units.
And so it's...
Ten qualifying calls?
Ten calls in a sixty-day period.
Perfect, thank you.
So just, yeah, we, we discussed this, something like this a few months ago at a council meeting. This, think of this ordinance specifically, maybe to, let's just assume that we have maybe a motel or a hotel in town and we get a lot of calls for overdoses and drugs, prostitution, and the police are constantly there. That would be considered a nuisance and this ordinance can be used to potentially curb things like that. And I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, I will, I'll be there.
Mary?
Mary, in regards to that ordinance that you were just talking about, I've got a question. Is it possible that ordinance is gonna include some of these cars where their alarms go off twenty-four hours a day? Is that going to be included, because I can see that in the ordinance? Would that be included?
It is included. And we also have a separate ordinance alarm. I mean, a, a separate ordinance regarding alarms.
Yeah, because sometimes they just go off and off.
So, so, in fact, when I met with the chief, the chief actually wanted that added as, as an addition. Because they do it all the time.
The reason I brought that up is some time ago, we had somebody in the neighborhood like that, I mean, talking years ago. Five o'clock, four o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, just going off. Finally, believe it or not, they towed the car away, and that was the end of the problem. Because that was in the ordinance.
Again, if it's, if it's, it's gotta be on, in this instance, it would have to be tied to a specific property.
Yeah, no, that was...
Not on the street.
Oh, no, no, this was put specific property, yeah.
But if it's on the street, no?
Yeah.
It's in the driveway, yeah. That's kind of what I was getting at.
So which way would it apply, would it apply to both?
In the driveway, in the backyard, not on the street.
But not on the street, but you do have an ordinance for the...
We do.
Separate one, sort of two separate ordinances for that particular...
We do.
Sound, okay. In regards to resolution I J K, I see you doing another, it appears to be a spot zoning. It's two oh two and two fifteen Belleville Avenue, but they're across the street from one another. So I'm just a little puzzled here. How does that come into an area of redevelopment when one is a plain lot? And people are looking to buy plain lots in Belleville, so why would you do that in an area of redevelopment? And the other one is an old Go-Go Bar. So I just don't understand the rationale of what is proposed to go there? If somebody put this on the agenda here, which we don't know who or why they put this on, how is it possible there are gonna be areas of redevelopment? Somebody explain that to me. Because to me, it appears to be spot zoning, I just, I just don't get it.
Well, just because you say it's a spot zone, Mary, doesn't mean it's a spot zone?
Well, no, it seems like property, let me just say this, you can say what you want, but it seems like we're just, we have, the whole town is an area of rehabilitation. They can do anything they want, but why, why do certain properties have to be selected? And all of a sudden, they become an area of redevelopment? And I don't even know why it's on agenda, it's gonna pass anyway. I haven't seen anything in five years get rejected, rejected for areas of redevelopment. So why don't you just do the whole town in the area of redevelopment? Because already in rehab, rehabilitation, you already have it in rehabilitation.
We're discussing a former Go-Go Bar, everybody.
We're trying to get rid of the Go-Go Bar. Yeah, but I mean, why call yourself, I mean, that's somebody, why call yourself?
They could have sold it, reopened the Go-Go Bar.
I mean, he won one point six million originally for both properties. Then he dropped the price down to one point two million. Because what I'm looking at is here, let's take, okay, you're doing an escrow agreement. Why do an escrow agreement? How does he know he's gonna get, he's giving you money in an escrow, but he doesn't know if the board's gonna approve it yet? Doesn't make sense to you? We're going backwards? Somebody, I don't...
Exactly the way the law makes it happen. That's the way we've done it really well.
My only question is, which I never get an answer. Who put this on the agenda? Who proposed this for this developer? Who? Is it one person? Five people, five minds, they think of it at the same time?
Maybe you don't get answers or you don't pause to let somebody answer.
I'm getting ready, I just wanna use my time up and then you can talk. Because I know you always cut me off and cheat on time, that's why.
Trying to answer him, everybody.
So, those are all my questions. You always told me to give you your questions, which I did for it. So I'll give you my answers now.
So one, first of all, you're not entitled to answer, it's called public commenting. I will answer you though, because the law allows us to do properties that are not necessarily adjoining as long as they're owned by the same person. So those two lots are connected, the parking lot is certainly connected to the building.
No, it's not, it's across the street from one another.
Connected by use now. Connected by, by ownership and connected by use. You use the parking lot to access the property, the business that's actually there. And then the other one was, what was the other question? Who put it on the agenda? There wasn't, I don't think there's one specific person. We do have a redevelopment committee meeting, myself...
Okay, who's, who's on the...
Mario, I'm trying to answer, Mario. Time is up, so let me speak now, like you should say. So we have a redevelopment committee, myself, Councilman Cosarelli's on it, Councilman Rosiano's on it, along with about six other professionals. We discuss various projects, we collectively decide to move things forward to let the governing body vote on.
So I assume you contacted the developer? Or he contacted you?
No, Mary, it's not how it works. It's not how it works, Mary, but you do have expertise in this, because I remember when you brought in a developer into this building. Do you remember that meeting, Mario? Do you remember when that developer came?
Get your facts three.
You remember that, Mario?
Get your facts three.
You said that you promised fast and quick approvals?
Get your facts three.
Do you remember that, Mario?
Get your facts three, because we'll be seeing you being out in cop someday. Your days are numbered.
Next satellite, yes, sir.
Don't worry.
Anthony Turtorello, my family owns the building.
Just go to the last one, sir.
Turtorello, T U R, T U R I E L L O. And I just have some pictures, if you can...
Here, actress?
We own up buildings from five seventy-three to five eighty-one Belleville Avenue. Located Belleville Avenue, Franklin Avenue, it's an intersection and we have some stable tenants, restaurants. I think many of you know of Ellie's Kitchen, which is now Gio's Kitchen, Taste of China. And a lot of people know the area and it looks nice. We're next to school number ten, Grammar School, the parking lot. We've owned the property for about forty years, my family. They came from Italy, worked hard, we bought, bought real estate. You know, that's where the money is, buying real estate. I'm a real estate agent, so, so that's what we did. And now we have beautiful properties in Belleville, okay? So we're happy, however, one day, I, I manage the properties, right? So I drove by and I saw on the parking lot next to school number ten, there is, there was mounds of cement and then like little, like posts coming out. I was like, okay, that's fine, they're putting lights for the kids. That's gonna keep it safe, I'm all for it. However, when I came back, I don't live there, I live in Melly. So when I came back, maybe a few weeks or so, back to check on the properties, they attached solar panels on the top. And we have billboards on the side of our building and they are obstructing the view of our billboards. But they did not give us notice, the township nor H E S P Solar gave us notice. We're neighbors, we've been there for forty years, no notice. They said we don't have to give you notice, we don't really care, we can't really help you. Um, and...
Sir, who, who actually told you that?
Frank De Lorenzo and H E S, well, he was being nice, but H E S P Solar was very like, we don't care, you know? It not, we don't care, but we, we do not need to give you notice to do this. So, I did contact school number ten, they said you should have banged on our door. That's not the way we do business, we're professionals, we don't deal like that. We dealt with the township and we went through that route, but we were not able to resolve it. So anyhow, we have solar panels with obstructed views, you can see the images, the buildings, without the view, without the, without the horrendous structure and then the, the, the picture with the structure. So, we're probably gonna lose the contracts with the billboard, so that's A. B, it looks hideous, if you know real estate, that will affect the values of the properties and the area itself, the houses and structures around the area. So I would say, if you own property in Belleville, I mean, it happened to us, it happened to any of you, where they're gonna, it looks disgusting. It looks like a, like a ghetto now with this disgusting metal structure. It should be by the garbage, the dumpsters, in the parking lot, in the back or on the roof. Who, who would let that happen? Doesn't make sense to me, it really doesn't. Very disappointed in the township and the way they just let it pass through.
Sir, you keep saying township, but that is school, school district property, that doesn't, that's separate government.
But they're like zoning, people have township.
More things I'll, I'll add, but I wouldn't do, know your comment.
I think that's about it, we're just very disappointed, we pay our taxes, we follow best practices, we try to keep the properties nice as possible, going both buildings. And for someone to do that, it just doesn't feel right. And I know the township, maybe they couldn't do much, but if there was a zoning compartment that has to slip through, maybe they should have said, really? Really? Just drive by if you can, you'd be very disappointed. Because this can happen in your neighborhood, that's basically it, so...
Yeah, I'm well aware, I know you live in Melly.
Oh, yeah.
I think I, I wrote back, but I tasked the man, I had a slight conflict there, so I just tasked the manager to reach out. And I know he did some homework, he gave me some of the information. It did go before the zoning board, I'm not quite sure if the...
Maybe the planning board?
No, it was not planning board.
No.
What is the planning board, I have the date of the one, of the zoning board.
Okay, I...
I can give you the date, that one.
I mean, it's just, I would have hoped that someone could dissemble it.
I'll give you the date and I'll give you the minutes of the meeting.
That doesn't resolve?
No, so that, but that's where, just so you know, that's where notice comes from.
But there is no notice, what were we doing?
I'm not saying whether you received a notice or not, I'm just saying...
Because I have other properties and from Melly, we get notice as soon as, I'm sorry, as soon as something gets put up.
Yeah, so depending on the type of, of application it was, I thought it was the zoning board, because I don't remember coming for the, the planning board, I mean. And depending on the type, depending on the type of project it is, sometimes you don't have to give notice, a lot of school district projects come to, at least nice on the planning board, come to the planning board for a courtesy review, which do not, which do not unfortunately apply notice. I agree with you, I don't like them, I think they're gonna be as well. Do think they negatively impacted your business, but your frustration, and I get it, it seems to be directed to township, it's not our property, it wasn't our project. And depending on what the school board does, sometimes notice doesn't have to be...
I thought they would have her back a little bit more, it was more like, okay, you know, happen.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that you can say is whether or not, if the structure was done correctly, would permit and all that.
I just, we're totally surprised, this never happened, again, we have other real estate, always a notice in other towns that, oh, we're doing this, we're your neighbor. And then for the school to say, you should have banged on our door, it's like, really? Is that the way you handle, it's, it's disappointing, it's unprofessional, it's not the way you do business, but it happens in Belleville, I guess. So, again, we're gonna lose money and we're gonna lose value.
It would happen in Melly, sir, if the school district decided to do so or not.
I haven't seen one school with such a structure. I don't know, maybe NORC, did they put them in NORC, I didn't see them in Melly. But to be honest with you, it's, it affects the real estate value for that, all the, you know, the houses in the area. Us, of course, probably gonna lose the contracts to the billboards. And again, for the benefit of the town, it's not a way to improve the township, so, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Anybody else? Matt?
Hi, good evening, my name is Aura Guerra, I live at forty-seven Belleville Avenue. In twenty years living in this town, this is my first time in front of this committee. The reason that bring me here tonight is the music from the new restaurant at Ave Maria. I live right behind here the building, the first house that you see as soon as you cross the train, train track. And all the music go that way. Honestly, it's very, very disturbing, very annoying, trying to sleep at twelve midnight, starting Friday. Well, actually, I don't know if I should say starting Friday, because they start on Monday this week. So yesterday, the music was very loud also. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, until twelve, sometime going past twelve midnight. Two Saturdays ago, I drove six hour to go to a relative funeral and mass service. And I came home around five P M, tried to sleep, I couldn't sleep the whole night. I called the police around eleven and they told me that they couldn't do anything. So...
Ma'am, just touch, because sometimes the timing really matters. Are you sure it was eleven o'clock, do you know the exact date? Because our deputy chief can actually check the recordings.
Yes.
Because they should not say they cannot do anything at eleven o'clock.
They told me that, they told me that, you can, you can call.
You have the date, ma'am?
And as a matter of fact, they told me come here, they told me come to the council.
Do you remember which Friday it was, or...
It was a Saturday.
Saturday?
Yes.
Around eleven o'clock?
Around eleven o'clock. To be honest with you, it was Saturday, May, May... No, sorry, not May, June seventeen.
Okay, but deputy chief is taking notes, I'm sure he'll review the call.
And the next day, Sunday, I called the restaurant, they apologized, they lowered the music a little bit, but this is going on. Weekends is my time to relax, it's the summertime now, I understand. I also understand that we, I, that I live in a construction, I'm sorry, not construction, what is it called? Industrial and commercial zone, because I, I live right here behind. But I think there should be a balance between the restaurant and the resident. I cannot have this in my own house, I cannot sleep. Sunday, I had a former coworker visiting me, we were trying to do some work together. And she said, I can't believe that this is happening around here. And she's, she lives in town or on the other side of the town. I was inviting her to come to be my witness of how loud the music, the music can go inside my house. My bedrooms are upstairs, so all the music go into my bedroom. And honestly, we can't sleep. My son and I, we are teachers and we see one hundred and thirty-plus students every day. So Friday, when we come home, we try to relax and release the stress of the week. But you even can go to sleep early on Friday anymore. I just want to compare something that happened to me. In October eight, last year, was a Saturday, I was going to have a party in my backyard, a religious party, where everybody in the party is from church. And I called the police to make sure that I was okay, because I was gonna have, I was gonna have a band playing outside. And they told me, as long as you don't pass ten o'clock or your music level is decent, it is okay. So, I call now for myself and they told me that I couldn't do anything.
So is that the one, is that the only time that you called, was that one time?
This is the, yes, the only one, the only time. But to be honest, I don't wanna be annoying, I don't wanna be calling the police.
You're not bothering them at all when you call, you can't sleep? If it's after ten o'clock, you can certainly call, I'm sorry, after eleven o'clock?
Especially, especially that they told me that they couldn't do anything. But just let me take ten seconds to play you how, how I hear the music back down there. But I want you to hear it like that.
I understand.
So that is how I hear the music in my house.
Yeah, it's not supposed to be that way, we absolutely have a law for that. Chief, it's a ten o'clock, ten? Ten, it's absolutely ten o'clock, so I know you called once, but you're certainly not bothering the police department. You can call whoever's still there if you want.
And according to the noise ordinance, if you have a decibel meter?
Deci...
Decibel meter? In my zone, which is the industrial and commercial zone, between ten P M and seven A M, the level of the music should be sixty decibels. And eighty decibels in outside air.
So just so you know, when you do call the police, our supervisor cars do have that decimal reader in it and they can absolutely act.
Okay.
So the deputy chief is gonna look into who may have given you wrong information, but if it happens tonight, it happens tomorrow, please do call the police.
Thank you so much and next time I will and I hope to have you right answer.
Absolutely, thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else in public comment?
Caesaroka, fifty-four Rutgers Street. Uh, just wanna echo what my neighbor just said. I'm further down than she is. I'm at Rutgers Street, as you know. Uh, I could hear it just as loud. That air, that outside bar, that open-air music is, I mean, it's just not working. It is complete nuisance. Ten, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock. I've reached out to the restaurant, reached out to the police department, sir. Same thing. Nothing we can do about it. First time. Second time-
The date that you called, by the-
Uh, I don't, but I will email it to you, so we have it on record, and you can look it up. Second time, um, we'll send someone out with the meter. Nothing happened. I remember that evening where like, me and my dad had walked up, it was past eleven o'clock.
Let me just pause you one second. Just, just pause you down. Chief, can I ask you a question? When, when, when a call like that happens and they send somebody out with, with the decimal reader, do they, do they go to the residence? House where the complaint is, or do they go to the business?
Well, the area, the officers will make a determination if they need the sound meter, then they'll call for a super class.
Where do they go? Do they go to his house, or do they go to the restaurant?
It depends who calls us. I mean, they'll go in the area of the call to see if it works that loud.
That's my question.
I mean, it may not be directly for our house. Just, if I may, I checked calls for service for, since January, this entire calendar year. We only have three noise complaints that came in. I don't know if you're calling, but we only have three in our CAT system. One, they were advised the music was lower. One, they did use the sound meter. The levels were within the, uh, acceptable range, and one was unbalanced. So I mean, I would love to know if, uh, which one of my officers is telling you there's nothing we can do. So I'm not doubting that you believe that, but if that's the case, they'll be corrected and there'll be distance for that. But we answer all our noise complaints.
Thank you.
And certainly I'm saying-
Certainly not saying that's not happening.
What I'm saying is that situation, that open-air music, it's echoing behind, it's going into the valley.
Project right now.
It's projecting straight into the valley. So all of those residents down there were listening to this like we're in an echo chamber. It's eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, you got a DJ screaming, crowd is screaming. Um, that, that just cannot happen. I mean, we're talking about, if you're the council of quality of life here, you know, improving quality of life, how is that not a quality of life issue?
Sure. I mean, the law, one of the orders that we did today is called a nuisance order. So if we get more than ten, ten complaints uh, in a given period of time, so I, as I tell everybody, you have to just call. Chief, just check the CAT system. We only have three calls this year.
We usually noise, uh, ordinance violations often, especially this time of year, but it's not something where, it's not feasible to post an officer outside the whiskey priest or whatever, agave or whatever it is to listen for noise.
Right.
We have to, um-
That's understandable. That's why I'm saying that someone sort of step in and say, hey, this open-air music just can't happen. I've been, and I'm sure many of you have been in an open-air, you know, restaurant or rooftop bar, ambiance music. It's not a disco-type open-air. There's homes, you know, around the area. It just doesn't make sense.
Please do continue to call though if you do see an infraction, uh, and that they get logged in. So as of right now, we're saying only three have been called in this year.
Mayor, if I may, to everyone here, you are never a bother to the police department calls. We are there twenty-four seven, that's our job. We encourage you to call us. And if you do call us and you don't get a proper response, the chief and I and the administration, we encourage you to let us know that so we can look into that. Because we have a very strong record of disciplining our officers and making sure we handle all of those properly.
I know probably my five minutes are up, but just, Agave Maria as well, this morning, uh, this morning I'm walking my mom past the restaurant, umbrellas, tables, well into the sidewalk. So how is that not an obstruction of, you know, sidewalks?
We do have a sidewalk cafe.
We don't need to do any of this to go around. Right? I, I get it. You'll be out there. I'm all for the business, I'm all for bringing, you know. But I'm happy to do this, work, disturb the tree.
I, I've seen it. They are twenty-five foot sidewalks, but we do permit, we do permit outside dining. Not, not twenty feet, but there are twenty, the sidewalks are at least twenty feet wide. And I know they don't go that far, but they do, we do permit that.
I got, I got a picture I can show you. You know, I literally had to skirt, skirt the tree to that.
You can show the manager.
Yeah.
You can do it after the meeting if you want.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else in public comment, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm Mr. Andrew Paulino from Rico Setzen Avenue. I just would like to show you the rats behind my building. Uh, I've been having the same issue for the last two years. I've been having help in the city towns, but still getting creased, the rats, behind my house. Uh, and I don't know what else we could do about it. I got a video here, I was explaining in the backyard.
I'll give you my email, and you can send me my email. That's always the best way.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I've heard it before, the, the one thing you could do is certainly contact the manager's office or email me or the manager, our website, our emails from the website. We do have our health department that can send out and bait traps and, uh-
You know what it is? The trap, I got traps, I got, but they don't go around.
They'll also send exterminator out. They'll also send exterminator out.
I saw the rats jumping around the bar and they're going around the place.
I can't stop a rat from jumping. I mean, I, I could bait them, I could put poison out there if the rat jumps. I, I wish I could solve that problem.
Nothing else like we can do about because like, if not in the, like, behind my, if it would have been like in, in the town property, I could do something, but it's like, in private property, I cannot do nothing about it.
I know, but I'm telling you what we could do-
Like a lot of garbage, a lot of rocks there. They got a lot of houses. Yeah.
We, we do have an exterminator that will, will put poison out. I mean, it's-
It's like poison, because they just go around.
If I can't catch them and I can't poison them, what, what do you want me to do?
Like-
I, I, I'm telling you what we can do.
Like, we can make the owner of the building, like, at least clean that part of the-
We can certainly do that, sir, but we don't know if the building is dirty. You have to let us know. I mean, yeah.
Okay, that's a lesson now. Like, all the rocks there, they got a nice house. They really have a nice house.
Send the address, and enter with the pictures.
Yeah, he, uh, he can get our health department out there. If there's violations in a property next door to clean up, we can do that. Uh, we've done that many times for other properties.
Okay.
Uh, we do have things, resources. You certainly, now tell everybody, you certainly don't have to wait for a council meeting. You can reach out to myself, or more importantly, you can reach out to the manager. Uh, his website's on the town website, so is mine. You don't have to wait for a month until the next council meeting. You can certainly do that. Saying do a noise, as the chief said, we've only had three noise complaints for agave, but there's more than three people here complaining about it that. So, you know, you don't have to wait another month until our next council meeting. You could always call the police department and make sure you log the complaint. But we have health department resources that are damaged. We can bait, we can put poison, or we can get a construction code out there, or the health department out there if there's debris surrounding the house that's creating an environment for them. We can definitely do that. Uh, and I, I wanna do that for you before the next council meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sheldon?
Uh, good evening. Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Ford Street. I just wanna start off by saying that everything you said earlier this evening, Mr. Bellum, about the Board of Education's solar panel project is correct. Uh, under state law, you have these three attorneys in the audience who hopefully can verify what I'm about to say, but under state law, the School, Construction and Finance Act, a Board of Education does not need zoning board approval for any projects. As long as the D O E signs off on the project, they're good to go. And as you said a little while ago, there is a courtesy review on the part of the planning board, but anything that the planning board says is non-binding. So I just wanted that to be set for the record. Um, as I'm sure everyone here is aware, there is currently legislation before the state legislature which would largely roll back Oprah. Uh, even though Senator Weinberg, who's now retired, spent the last several years of her life trying to modernize and expand Oprah, unfortunately now there seems to be efforts to roll it back. As Mr. Fleishman and the Velvet Watch Facebook page have chronicled in recent days, there are a number of communities in New Jersey that are trying to, uh, use their collective power to accomplish what Senator Weinberg was trying to do, to expand and modernize Oprah. If you guys are going to be true to your words about openness and transparency, I would like to see this body have a, a proclamation, a resolution to join communities like Jersey City and Hoboken, asking the state to expand Oprah. And I know that one of the issues here among spending municipalities is largely an unfounded mandate, but to also ask the state to provide you with additional financial resources to better address Oprah needs. So if you could think about that, I would appreciate it. Uh, earlier this year, there was a lot of discussion, and I, this was largely led by Mr. Graziano, who's your chair of your technology committee, about the transitioning from iCompass to Board Docs. There hasn't really been anything said in recent times about that. If at all possible tonight, I would appreciate it if you could give us some update. I'm hoping that before the end of this year is out, you're finally gonna be, uh, using, uh, Board Docs, which the Board of Education has been using. Mr. Graziano was largely responsible for that initiative. They've been using it since the beginning of two thousand eighteen. I think Gutenberg has been using it since two thousand sixteen. Uh, the last thing I, um, oh, A Nor for the wet project, just for the record, um, in case people don't know who those are, most people are normal, not like me, who spends every waking moment at planning board meetings and zoning board meetings, et cetera, but A Nor declarations, area need a redevelopment. That's a prerequisite in order for this government body to, uh, award a pilot or long-term tax exemption. So that's the, the real gist of why a property developer would want an A Nor declaration. And lastly, um, there's been in recent times, a lot of social media discussion about the unfortunate condition of a lot of our outdoor athletic facilities. Uh, in particular, school number seven, people are complaining about large amounts of trash, dog feces being out on the playground facilities. Now, it's my understanding, based on recent conversations with this body, that there's some sort of reciprocal shared services agreement between the town hall and Board of Ed, so that, you know, it would be more policing, more monitoring of these sites. If you can tonight, could you just address what the town hall is doing on your side to make sure that these, uh, athletic facilities are maintained properly and to discourage any vandals from ruining things for all of our children? When there's a board meeting later this month on the thirty-first, I'm going to ask Dr. Tomco and company to publicly address what they're doing to try to curb this unfortunate behavior. But if you guys tonight can say anything about what you're doing collectively to try to keep our playgrounds, we've made such a major investment over the last several years in these facilities to try to keep them in tip-top condition, I would appreciate it. And I still have a minute to go, but I won't bother you anymore. So I thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
I'm unaware of any formal agreement, uh, between us and the Board of Education, but maybe there's something that's informal, Ant, or know where we are with that?
As far as, as far as I'm with the Board of Education-
Uh, shared service or community watching.
We recently met with, uh, Dr. Tomco and a few of the board members to discuss several issues. That was one of them. Um, school security and I would say, security guard, parking guard issue. There was a concern or that was brought up most recently, that the Board of Education security people have guns, so we had to get a ruling from their attorney on it. I think that's where we're at. We're just waiting for that ruling to come out.
So as of right now, currently debris at number seven school, whether it's bottles that are all over the place, and dog feces, that's current vote of it?
Hundred percent vote of it.
Okay. And I did look that up. That was the planning board meeting of November tenth, uh, twenty twenty-one, when the school district came before the planning board for a courtesy review. November tenth, twenty-one. Uh, anybody else in public comment? Start.
Jerry DeGarcio, A Grove Street. I'm coming before you unusually as chairman of the zoning board. At our meeting last Thursday, we had an application for a project on Union Avenue, and I believe it's Campbell Avenue. I don't know why it's an avenue, it's only one block. Uh, but there was a number of residents from there who came to the meeting. They filled two pews, actually. And, uh, they were concerned about the parking because we approved, uh, sixteen units of which, uh, a building is going to be built on Campbell. There is going to be a demolition of a one-family house and a replacement of a four-story, five-unit building, two one-bedrooms and three efficiencies. And they were concerned about the parking problem. And we decided that as a condition of the approval, that we would recommend as the board to the council to grant the residents of Campbell Avenue permit parking. Um, that will be in our resolution. When the resolution is memorialized, it will have copies sent to each member of the council and to the police chief. But I could tell you, there is a parking problem because a number of years ago, I believe six years ago, we had an application before us by, uh, former councilman Longo, because he was moving to Florida, but he couldn't sell his property because of the parking problem that he did not have driveway. He was the only resident of that block, on both sides that did not have a driveway, and we granted him permission to put a driveway in, which is a beautiful driveway. It's even paved. It's, it's got pavers, not asphalt. And as a result, most of the properties there have space for maybe one car in their driveway and one car in front of the house. And that's it. So that's why we're making that recommendation. And one other thing, at our reorganization meeting, since we honored Ms. Meanie tonight, uh, she was elected unanimously as the new vice chairperson of the zoning board.
Anybody else in public comment?
Carmella Fleishman, thirty-three Main Street. Uh, I want to thank the mayor and council for the, um, giving the ball rolling with the cleanup on Main Street in twenty-one. I know I sent you the copy and email that I sent to the town, or, excuse me, to the state. Um, I'm giving the state a month. I think that's more than fair to give them the month. Because again, my definition of clean and maybe their definition of cleaner, two different things. Now, in the email, I did address the trees. They stated that the trees were planted by public service. Why public service is planting trees, I do not know. So my question to make is, can we find out who I need to contact to P S C and G about the dead trees now?
If you shoot me the email, I can send a, a contact.
Okay, thank much.
Anybody else in public comment? Start.
Good evening. Frank Les, seventy-two, Compton, LA. Uh, I just wanted to comment and really thank the council and the town manager for really an amazing job for July four celebrations. Uh, you know, some people thought that it very odd and inconvenience to have the celebrations on the third. Uh, for me, I think it is the opposite. I think it actually helped a lot of people really have that extra day to make plans, really dedicate to their families like I did. And I really wanna say that it really was the best in a while. I really do think, whether it be attendance, whether it be the fireworks themselves, whether it be just the community coming together, I really did thank you guys, did a great job. So I wanted to thank everybody on that. I want to congratulate, uh, Vinnie Cozzarelli for being the new deputy mayor. And I want to thank Todd Agarziano for another great year as deputy mayor. So, as always, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public comment? Motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second to close public comment. Kirk, call it all.
Councilmember Cozzarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Montari?
Man, I'm sure he's fine closing public comments.
Yes.
Stollberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
John, are you okay with closing public comment?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, consent agenda, M. I'm gonna pull off M, please.
You gotta pull, we gotta pull. Flare rate consumption. You gotta pull that, right?
Yep. That's it?
Yep.
Entertaining motion to move the consent agenda without letter M.
So moved.
One thousand nine hundred and ninety-four. A motion made and second to move the consent agenda with the exception of resolution M one ninety-four. Kirk, call it all.
Councilmember Cozzarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Montari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stollberg?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Need a motion for resolution M.
Also, second.
A motion made and second for resolution M. Kirk, call it all.
Councilmember Cozzarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Montari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stollberg?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Same.
Uh, we have new business. Need that, uh, motion.
So moved.
Sorry. A motion made and second. Kirk, call it all.
Councilmember Cozzarelli?
Yes.
Braziano?
Take it apart. Because it just came on again. This is another, uh, it's under new business. It's another one where-
That, that was the clerk's office, the reason why councilman, uh, this came on. Uh, this licensee, um, did not meet the requirements, uh, for the meeting of June twenty-seventh. Uh, so they had two choices. Either shut down and not sell liquor, or we were advised, or we advised him to go to the state and requested ad interim, which is a temporary license, which he did, and he hasn't until the seventeenth. It was around three forty-five today that the state granted the approval, so I-
Either tonight or August.
Right. As a department head, I made the decision and not penalize him any further.
He would not be embezzled, he'd stay open until the August.
And I respect this, and that's why I took it apart to see for personal, like I would have done. Thank you.
Um, Montari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stollberg?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Same.
Uh, that's it. Motion due adjourned. Motion made adjourned. Motion made and taken. No law favor?